I will call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Getting an echo. The open session part of the meeting will begin around 7:00. A public comment on closed session agenda items before going into closed session. The board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
All right, seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. All right, welcome back. We will call this meeting back to order. Good evening, my name is David T. Gracia, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Asidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. One of our interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Good night. Buenas tardes, la interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la junta directiva esta noche. Para acceder a la interpretación desde una computadora, haga clic en el ícono de la interpretación en la parte inferior de su pantalla dentro de la aplicación Zoom. En un dispositivo móvil, haga clic en el botón en la parte inferior de la pantalla y elija "Interpretación de idiomas" dentro de la aplicación Zoom. Ese es un canal independiente que le permitirá escuchar simultáneamente la traducción del inglés al español. Tenga en cuenta que los servicios de interpretación no están disponibles cuando se use o une a nuestra reunión por teléfono de casa. Gracias.
Thank you, back to you, Mr. President. All right, thank you so much. Okay, we're now on to, um, we need to have an attendance roll call. Can we get an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser.
Present.
Trustee Shu.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee González Mares.
Present.
Coram, present, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. All right, thank you all for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. We now have item E1, which is a report on closed session. Trustee Riser, do you have a report on closed session items?
In closed session, the board approved an amendment to a settlement agreement in order to resolve a student's educational claims. And then regarding D1, Student Discipline, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 48912.20, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G, Student Matters. D1B, readmitted expulsions, there were two cases. In the first case, the board recommends the readmitted expulsion for student 02092023A. Should we do the roll call?
Yeah, we will.
Move to. Oh, sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee González Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And then D1B, item 2, the board recommends the readmitted expulsion for student 05112023A.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee González Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
All right, and that ends our report on closed session. Thank you, trustee Riser. Now we will move on to item E2, which is the flag salute. Trustee Water, will you lead us in the flag salute tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. E3, announcement. This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Moving on to item E4, approval of the agenda. I will move to approve the agenda but pull item K5B off the agenda.
I will second.
All right, I had the first, trustee Chu had the second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposition, abstentions, motion passes. All right, we'll now move on to item E5, which is approval of the minutes. E5A, August 24th, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor? Aye. Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, E5B, September 1, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Hart. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Abstain.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
And abstain.
Motion passes. E6, recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Macedi, do we have any visitors in attendance?
We do, and we'll start out with who's in the boardroom this evening. I'd like to welcome and thank the president of NVEA, Deb St. Clair, who's here this evening, and the chief negotiator for NVEA, Mr. Troy Giddings. Would you all like to come and address the board?
That's it. Thank you. Good evening, NVUSD trustees, Dr. Macedi, staff and community. Thank you for this opportunity just to share out real quick from NVEA. I just wanted to kind of give a little recap as to everything that we've been doing since school began and before, so just to kind of thank everyone for all the work that's been being done. In July, Troy and myself were invited to participate in Cohort 1 of Outward Leadership with the Arbinger Institute. And as a leader within the larger NVUSD organization, taking stock and looking outward, being curious, seeing others, and striving to understand others' needs, objectives, and challenges has been instrumental in my role. I'm also excited that other members of our exec board will be participating in Cohort 2 and 3 and seeing what kind of impact that has on NVEA. In August, Troy and I and Jen from NAPS were invited to the new teacher orientation or the new employee orientation. There we were met with a room full of new certificated employees, and we're able to share information about NVEA, but also about the collaborative relationship that we have with NVUSD because of our deep-rooted beliefs and interest-based problem solving. And to build on that, Troy and I have started our journey today to fulfill our commitment to visiting all sites within NVUSD by the end of September. As new leadership, we feel that it's very important that we see all sites and are at all sites and feel what it's like at all sites because of the decisions that we're making to represent our membership, so. And we also have little gifts for all of our new employees, so hopefully they'll like that. Since the beginning of school, we have also been meeting with instructional services, special ed, business services, HR, and we appreciate the open door policy and the willingness by all to listen to our concerns and our contractual issues and problem solve to get to resolution as quickly as possible. And this also goes for site principals and site admin as well. And just lastly, I want to thank my exec board and all of my site reps just to kind of go on public record for them. I know the beginning of the year is busy for everyone, and I appreciate the level of attention the exec board has given to site reps and helping and providing different levels of support for their sites. The beginning of school does, is exciting, but it also does come with challenges. And I want to thank the NVEA site reps and our exec board for supporting our site reps to address challenges at sites. I'm so proud of both groups who are dedicated to building capacity within themselves and their members so challenges can be resolved quickly and efficiently. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I had the opportunity to work with Mike Pearson at the Energy Conservation Task Force, and my thought partner was Finnegan. And I can tell you this, the Napa Valley Unified School District's students are highly represented by Finnegan. His thoughts, ideas, and insight, like, were profound and really set the stage for what we're going to be doing in that committee. So, thank you, Finnegan.
Thank you, NVEA. We also have the president of NAPS here in the boardroom with us this evening, Ms. Jennifer Khan. Ms. Khan, would you like to come up and address the board?
Thank you so much, Dr. Macedi, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, and our NVUSD community. It's just like Deb and Troy said, it's been such an exciting start to the school year. Our membership starts about a week and a half before the students, and it was lonely and quiet on those campuses before we opened our doors to students. So, being out there and seeing kids on the playground and out in the quads and getting caught in the lunch traffic for Napa High, it just reminds us why we're here. And I really need to get that schedule down. But it just reminds us why we're here and we're serving our students and that that's really why we all come to work every day and seeing the impact that our collective membership has and also with our partnership with NVEA and CSEA and gaining to partner with our teachers and our classified staff. It's just such a great organization to be a part of, and I'm just so happy to be a part of it with you all. So, thank you so much. We're looking forward to a really fun and exciting year.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Khan. And I see online we have our county superintendent of schools, Dr. Barbara Nemko. Dr. Nemko, if you want to come on over and online, address the board. Move her over. Are you there, Dr. Nemko?
I am, and I'm just listening.
Okay, well, thanks for being here. Good evening, we always honor our guests and leaders in the community, so thanks so much for tuning in tonight, we appreciate your presence.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to item F, recognition of Students of the Month. F1, New Technology High School. Will Principal Dev please introduce our students?
Good evening, NVUSD Board of Trustees, President Gracia and Dr. Macedi. Congratulations to the Student of the Month winners at Napa High that are going to be introduced in a little bit today. My name's Avinav Dev, and I'm the principal of New Tech High School. The first month of the school year has been very exciting for Penguin Nation. Students engaged in their first all-school meeting of the year this morning, led by our ASP, who have some great events planned for the coming months. Back-to-school night was a success earlier this week. Families had an opportunity to engage in interactive process, giving feedback on our school's current programming and diving deep into student assessment work. We were also able to officially announce that New Tech High received an early college grant from the state of California, giving our community the opportunity to build on relationships with Napa Valley College and strengthen our college and career planning even more. We look forward to this new initiative as it will also support the open enrollment process coming up in just a month. I personally had the pleasure of accompanying 30 of our amazing students to the NVUSD School Summit yesterday, one of whom is our Student of the Month for September. Congratulations to Alan Ramirez Ortiz. Alan is an exemplary Penguin. He consistently puts the needs of the students at the top of his priority list. Alan has been in leadership for two years, leading the charge in creating strong routines and systems that meet student need. Alan knows the ins and outs of student event planning like no one else. He'll be graduating in June, and the invaluable institutional knowledge Alan holds about all things New Tech will be missed. Alan's teachers share that he is always on task, is utterly responsible, and the kindness and willingness he shows towards everyone on campus is radiating. Alan has built his self-advocacy skills and has turned into a true leader on campus. Alan, the New Tech staff always talked about how we wouldn't be where we are without your commitment and support. Your future is incredibly bright, congratulations. And Alan is here tonight and has prepared a statement to share with the board.
Hello?
We can hear you. Alan, please proceed.
Yeah. Hi, hello, buenos dias, I am Alan. I greatly appreciate the few minutes I have to be here, and I'd like to express my gratitude to my teachers and peers who would have been able to fuel my motivation and to achieve my goals. I appreciate the choices and paths that New Tech has been able to provide for me to allow me to be able to recently travel to the Napa Valley College recently to learn more about other colleges and universities along with career opportunities that I can take within my future. I would also like to give a grand shout-out to my principal, Mr. Dev, and assistant principal, and Mr. Biggs, to allow me to take leadership throughout my journey to continue growing and learning here as a current student at New Technology. It's been such an honor to be nominated for Student of the Month.
Thank you, Alan, congratulations. Onto our Student of the Month for October. Congratulations to junior Joy Bradbury. Joy is a creative student who is very self-directed. She's welcoming, kind, and makes confidence look effortless. Joy's outside-the-box thinking and thoughtful intention when completing projects are qualities all of her teachers consistently observe. Joy has a range of interests and hobbies as she has represented the Napa High basketball team and currently teaches swimming to children. Joy is dual-enrolled at Napa Valley College. She's also an incredible artist, and I'm one of the lucky New Tech staff who have received an original Joy Bradbury piece. Joy, this recognition tonight is very well-deserved. We are all very proud of you. Joy has prepared a few words to share with the board.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, hello, everyone. My name is Joy Bradbury, and, I'm sorry. And I'm a junior at New Tech High School. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of all you and say how honored I am to be elected Student of the Month. I think going to New Tech was the best choice I could have made for high school. The teachers and staff are amazing and really care about all of the students that walk in the doors of New Tech every year. I love all the different opportunities New Tech provides for all of the students. I feel going to this school has really impacted my life in a really incredible way. I've become more confident in my academics and my public speaking abilities. As a shy, gay teenager freshman year, I don't think I could have succeeded and found my people at any other larger schools. I especially love the social and supportive mental health environment that New Tech has created. Everyone can just be themselves without fear of judgment. It's also where I've met and reconnected with some of my best friends. Over three years at New Tech, so far it's helped me grow my love for my favorite thing in the whole world, art. I hope to pursue it at UC Santa Cruz when I graduate. Oh, so thank you to New Tech, Mr. Dev, and all my teachers. I couldn't have done it without you guys. And thank you to the NVUSD Board to continuing to support New Tech and giving high schoolers a choice for this terrific, smaller school here in Napa. Thank you.
Congratulations to Alan, Joy, and their families. Everyone, have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Dev, and let's give a little round of applause to both the New Tech students. All right, now we will move on to F2, Napa High School. Will Dr. Ainsworth please present the Students of the Month?
All right, good evening, thanks. It's nice to be back and getting to do, I think, one of the favorite things as a principal that I get to be a part of in honoring our Students of the Month. Tonight holds, I think, a special place for me with our two students. They happen to be absolutely inseparable best friends. They come both from our ELD community at Napa High School and have worked closely with Martha and Danny, who I have to give a big shout-out and thank you for their work as teachers of our multilingual learner community. First off is Ismar Alkazar Ortiz. Ismar, if you go back to the gray dark days of COVID, and we had not seen students in several months, and in an October morning, we opened school with students for the first time, Ismar was the very first student on campus knocking on the student services door, demanding that she be led into her class so she can begin learning because she's already lost time in learning in her classroom and wanted it now. Best described as relentless and fearless in her desire to learn. I'm going to let her words speak for herself because they're far more powerful than I think anything I could come up with and to describe this amazing young woman. But I think it's a perfect example tonight of what makes Napa Valley Unified so special and the communities that we build that I'm not sure anybody else can ever build in the way that we do as a community for our students to thrive in some special ways. So, Ismar, go ahead and jump in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Ainsworth, New City and NVUSD Board and community members. I'm honored to be recognized as the September Napa High Student of the Month. This evening, I would like to share a lot of it on myself and educational journey as NVUSD student. At the moment, I'm feeling so emotional and excited. I never thought it would happen to me because when I came to the United States three years ago during the pandemic, every time in my life, I was ill-learning of English. Everything was so confusing and difficult for me. Every day after school, I cried because I considered myself as a slow learner. I wondered many times, is there any problem with me? Why can't I learn faster? I thought I was just not good enough to be there. No one will ever pay attention to what I have to say because my words don't have value. But one day, I decided to stop being the victimizer of my story. I decided to see a friend or another predator and lose our new paths. And with that, everything began, everything began to change. I just started comparing myself and expressing my efforts, and I started being more understanding of myself. Fear never left, but it became my failed company that motivated me to move on. However, this was not just because of my impulse. I met these amazing people like my teachers, Ms. Calderon and Mr. Campos, over these three years who have been there for me, who guide me, and who will always be there to show me that I'm no longer alone. That will be never the seven-year girl who was a companion with the cold and loneliness. Now, I'm 17-years-old, who will never feel like that. And with this, my mind is clear. After graduating from high school, I would go for four years in university where I would do what I love, what I love, being inspiring by others. As I said before, we face situations that will be difficult, but remember, it is up to us how we decide to conquer those situations. If you were a pastor in grade, look for a new president in your heart, we will knock it back. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And what I neglected to say about Ismar is, in addition to being here since her freshman year as a new learner of English, she's ending her career at Napa High, taking multiple AP courses and thriving in all of them. So, again, Ismar, thank you, and nice job, we're so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our next Student of the Month is Mary Jose. You have actually met her before, she presented before the board last school year with Kelly Miller. She also served on our student committee for the El Cap Feedback this past spring. She herself is also taking multiple AP courses, and even as a second-year learner of English was in honors math courses. And I think what we are most excited about is already within her three-year journey, Mary Jose, we just found out this week, is being reclassified as an English language learner. So, she has completed that and met all the criteria that our district sets forth, which makes tonight even more special and even more exciting. So, please welcome Mary Jose as she shares her thoughts with us.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Dr. Macedi, NVUSD Board and community members. I am honored to be recognized as the October Napa High Student of the Month. This evening, I would like to share a bit about myself and my educational journey as an NVUSD student. I came to the United States two years and a half ago. I had very little English then, and I started as a new D1 student. It was difficult for me to understand my classes or homework. There was a point where I got really stressed that I cried. But my sister and my mom motivated me, so I started trying different things and became involved in my community. I tried ceramics and ultimate frisbee clubs, but I didn't like them. I also got into a dance class during a flight because it didn't fit in my schedule. At first, I didn't like it because I had no friends, but I met someone and I started feeling more comfortable. I also enjoyed it more. Then I tried a sport, but didn't like it because no one wanted to talk with me, so I dropped. Since the 10th grade, I started meeting with the principal and other important people. I even presented it to the district board. It also was the year in which I took my first AP class. Being involved has me grow as a person. However, my biggest goal is to get accepted to UC Berkeley, where I helped to get a major in dance and performance studies. Thank you to my family, who is always supporting me, to my teachers, Mrs. Calderon and Mr. Campos, for all those words of encouragement, to my friends who never left me alone. Finally, thank you, Dr. Ainsworth, for all these opportunities. Porque lo imposible solo cuesta un poco más.
Thank you, Mary Jose. Thank you, that's cool.
All right, thank you so much. We'll now move on to item G, public comment on non-agenda items. Trustee Riser, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comment on non-agenda items. Were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
All right, thank you, trustee Riser. We do have a public comment in the boardroom. First person up will be. First person up will be Amy Metzger. Just come forward. Hold on, Amy. I'm sorry. It sounds like your microphone is not on. Can we have someone fix that for her?
Is it on now?
Yes, it is.
My son is currently a senior at Napa or at Vintage High School right now, and this has been a concern that's been going on since he's been there. He's afraid to go in the bathrooms. It's like gang warfare in the bathrooms. He says kids leave class early so they can go vape. He says he walks by the bathrooms. There's always people, you always hear people fighting, racial slurs going through, people shouting, crips and doing this little thing that the Bloods do. He said it's like he's afraid to go in the bathrooms, and I've complained about this before because he's not the only one that's had this problem. And I talked to the principal. They haven't done a whole lot. They said everything's fine. There's no behavioral problems on the campus. It's just great. So most recently, I guess from what he says, they're going and they're closing all the various bathrooms down to try to avoid all of the vaping and the gang activity, but that just drives them all into one tighter area. So now the crips and the Bloods have to share their own bathroom, and it's a real problem. And I've got, I've got a videotape of a kid getting beat to unconsciousness from one of the bathrooms in Vintage High School from several years ago. It was apparently posted on TikTok and was taken down. But I've got it. Every kid in the school has it. And I'm just kind of getting frustrated at hearing about. There was also this senior prank last year where they were spraying pink all over the students' cars in the middle of the class day, and they didn't want to do anything about it. I was like, are you going to call the police? No, we want to take care of it ourselves. And so all the kids who were supposed to be studying for the board or for the finals are panicking that their car is being vandalized. They got the kids who were skipping out of school to vandalize people's cars, and the school doesn't think it's that big of a deal. And I'm just wondering, why is all of this stuff being allowed to happen? And we're providing food to every kid in the school for lunch and breakfast, whether they need it or not, and half that food goes out, goes to waste. Why aren't we saying just feeding the kids who need the food and use the money to buy security officers? They should have uniformed security officers rather than a few supervisors who spend their time playing on the telephone. It's a real concern. And I finally decided I just need to come to the board and see what they have to say.
We don't respond during public comments, but I would thank you very much for sharing your concerns. I would like to direct you to Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings. She can touch base with you and get your information and follow-up.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any more public comment in the boardroom. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment online?
Yes, we do have a public comment. Jeff Shatman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Board. I speak to you tonight as a former River parent about the fiasco that is Maya Comas and the way it has been handled by this board. Once upon a time in Napa, parents and students had choices. We had a variety of schools to choose from. At one point, we had River, New Tech, Edison, Harvest, NVLA and Stonebridge. I personally had two children go through the district and saw firsthand the power of these schools. They attended River and New Tech and the opening of Stonebridge when it was Napa Valley Charter School in tents at the fairgrounds. It was a time that was exciting to be a part of education in Napa. I personally spent a total of six years on the River School Board, two of those years as president. Test scores rose. Parents couldn't have been happier. We trusted the district and we worked collaboratively with them without fearing for our existence. Superintendents like David Brown and John Glazer and Patrick Sweeney embraced educational choice that reflected the creativity and diversity of our community. They knew and we knew that Napa was not a one-size-fits-all kind of place. However, sadly, today, things have changed. NVUSD now has a superintendent who's obsessed with control, whose policies are dictated by a form of personal narcissism and who is essentially owned by and takes orders not from parents but from the CTA. And she's still, in spite of repeated promises, doesn't even live in the community she serves in, even while earning almost $400,000 per year. In the past, our district invested millions in our children, not in legal fees, aimed at limiting the choices of parents and students. We should be concerned about students rather than wasting resources on ill-fated ego-driven strategies that are the equivalent of stomping our feet to prove you're right. Schools like Maya Comas should be celebrated as community assets. It's schools like these that just might attract families to move to Napa. We have an aging population and a lack of young families moving here. A rigid hardcore educational uniformity will attract no one. I hear that we should be glad that the budget has been balanced by the current superintendent. But you know, it was Mussolini who made the trains run on time, but he didn't do a whole lot to make Italy a better place. As a longtime River parent, I urge this board to change its position on the Maya Comas Charter, and furthermore, I would urge the NVUSD Board and its superintendent to act worthy of a world-class community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, is there any other public comment?
Yes, next speaker, Adrian Chambers. Go ahead, please.
There you go. President Gracia and members of the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees, my name is Kathleen Chambers. I'm a lawyer and a current member of the California Bar. I do believe that lawyers earn their money. Lawsuits are disruptive, time-consuming, incredibly expensive to promulgate, and especially so for persistent litigants. For the last two years, this district has spent huge amounts litigating against the petitions of tiny, successful Maya Comas Charter School. These gargantuan sums come at the expense of the taxpaying public who entrusted you with money from their pockets to improve opportunities for children. Schoolchildren, the direct beneficiaries of your promised guidance are currently at every level and in almost all subgroups achieving below the state average in English and math. Classrooms bulge with thirty-five to forty kids, hardly an optimum learning environment. Currently, there is a massive exodus by families fleeing your public failure. Every private school in the area is full and has waiting lists. Dismayed parents are groping toward homeschooling and independent studies programs, and yet you choose to spend tax money needed to shore up and improve on measurable deficiencies in our public schools, and on what? You choose to spend it on litigation. As a lawyer, I thank you for preferring our welfare to that of your students. As a member of the public, I am appalled. You need to spend money as it was intended. Give the children of Napa the best education you can create, the education you promised them that they deserve. To do otherwise and claim you are working in the interests of Napa kids is just crazy, as crazy as sitting on a $91 million surplus in 2023 while testing confirms that we are falling farther and farther behind. I would urge every taxpayer in Napa to hear this message. If the NVUSD Board persists in purposeless litigation, if they continue to enrich law firms instead of children's educational opportunities, just say no to any bond they are hatching for 24/24. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Michaels, do we have any other public comment?
We have no more public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to Item H. These are reports. Item H1, Board of Education and Student Board Representatives. Student Board Member McGrath, would you like to start this?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I just want to say congratulations to the Students of the Month. I personally know Mary Jose and Ismar, and they're both very great people. You guys are still on there. Felicidades. Congratulations. So thank you for that. Me and Trustee Gonzales Matis had tears in our eyes, so they were very good. Also, thank you to Mr. Giddings for your kind words. The Energy Conservation Committee was very interesting, and I hope that it's a productive experience. Yesterday, alongside over 260 students from NVUSD TK Middle and High Schools, I attended a student summit at Napa Valley College. The goal of the student summit was to gather a variety of student perspectives and voices from across the district, which I think was done well. There was definitely a large amount of students and a large diversity of opinion and thought, which is awesome. There was a group of twenty to thirty-five students per school. I don't know the exact number, and we went through a series of stations and classrooms. Each school stayed within their school group, and we went through the stations. We were asked about to think about the future and and write down, you know, qualities that we think successful students, successful adults that help successful students have. And after going through this, I talked to all of the students at Napa and I reached out to some students at Vintage New Tech and as well as our Student Board Member Alternate Mistura, who is a student at American Canyon. And across the board, everyone was very grateful that we were invited to provide feedback because students want our voices to be heard, and we were very grateful that we had the opportunity to do so. Also shared by a lot of the students, some students were concerned that the questions that we were asked weren't super concrete. And we were asked kind of big-picture questions rather than specific questions about our education, but I was talking with Trustee Gonzales Matis about this, who has been through more design processes than I have. And that is possibly by design. So there's definitely some getting used to that, but all in all, it was a great starting point. And I think, you know, I'm excited to see what the future holds for that. Another positive about the summit is that accessibility was great for Spanish speakers. There was written in Spanish and in English for all of the posters, and the Spanish speakers in my group were provided with an interpreter that followed us through all the stations. And I talked to them and they're like, they said it was very helpful. Student summit aside, across high school campuses, club days have happened or are going to happen, and people are signing up for clubs, and it's always positive to see students have a space to share their interests with others. And lastly, Mexican Independence Day is this Saturday, and to celebrate at Napa High, our mariachi band will, our mariachi club will be performing in our quad in our break at lunch. So with that, I conclude my first board report, and congratulations, everyone, on our first month of school.
All right, thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Mars.
Thank you for that report. And yes, we'd like a box of tissue. We both agree that we're fellow cryers here, so. And yeah, so four weeks since school started, I'm happy to have taken some time off and unfortunately missed the first, my first board meeting when a school year starts. I usually like right there, but took a beautiful trip with my eighty-year-old dad and checked off a couple of his bucket list items, so I'm glad to have done that. But upon the return and just within the first week of being back, right away, we were full of this week of activities that my fellow trustees and I joined, and we've been seeing each other here and there and not only spending time with our superintendent, but also key staff and and leadership and union leaders and a diverse group of our of our school district. And so that that kind of engagement has been really exciting with what has been mentioned before of lots of trainings and just opportunities to discuss, have ideas, cross over between different leadership groups or areas or sites and whatnot, and I think that's what's been really exciting with the work that the board had been putting together in terms of consultants or like the arbitrage is something that's been shared multiple times and in using our resources so that we can continue to work on focusing on what we're all here for, for our students. And then really that kind of excitement from one training to another, just it flows and it spills over. Many of us had a thirteen, I think, hour-long day, fourteen-hour-long day on Tuesday and still met with smiles and sort of like, you're good. Yeah, I'm good. And just kept on going, specifically when you're really having to be present, but nothing gets you more excited when you start to think about strategic visioning of the future. And so that gets your brain juices going, and when you're talking about the future and our students and starting to design, think or imagine, that got really exciting for me to be able to have the opportunity to share my own perspective, my own thoughts and hear or read more so what others are sharing, because sometimes we need our own time, even though we're in our in our space together to think about what we're thinking and being asked. But it's really great to see how that collectively comes together in a room full of of good people. So I really enjoy doing that with my fellow trustees that were present and the team that were there with our strategic vision. I will also, I have been seeing a lot of flags pop up in our community embracing what's coming soon, which is the Hispanic Latino Latinx Heritage Month. And I find tremendous pride as a Mexican-American, Latina, Chicana, Indigenous of the Americas to see folks of our community embrace their heritage and and their background and their history to honor our contributions of and participation and impact to our community and especially to the country here in the United States. So it really embraces that opportunity to learn about, more about each other. So I invite you to really look into a lot of the different events happening throughout Napa County that honor that. And I appreciate that the schools, which we had our own preview at the opening of our Welcome Back to the District to see our Napa High School Mariachi Club present that day. So you'll have a pretty good show. So yeah, just I think I've been reflecting with the trainings and the visioning and then like the Heritage Month, and then there's going to be more to happen, just that how that complexity of human beings we are and just being able to be present for each other and do the, you know, combination of do the work and and show up as a human and be kind and let's get to work. So just excited to be back here at the Diocese with everyone.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Going back now to mid-August, since I wasn't here at our last board meeting, I was happy to be able to participate in my first Welcome Back for all the employees for here in Napa, which is really cool to see. Dr. Musetti and President Gracia be able to address online, I think Finn actually got to to address the crowd as well and welcome everybody back for the new school year. So that was very exciting. At the end of August, I was able to participate in the Board Advisory Policy Committee meeting, which is always fun, and a lot of reading ahead of time, but all good information. I think the funnest thing I got to participate in the last few weeks was I spent three days at my daughter's school, Pueblo Vista, helping out with the book fair, which the, my inner child was thrilled with, and as a parent, I got suckered into buying multiple books every day. So that's good. All goes back to help out the kids. And one of the really cool things was during some of our downtime, so I got to have conversations with some of the parents there that are the ones that are really involved and volunteer and asked a lot of really good questions. So I'll be following up with some of you in this room about some of the questions that came up during that time. So I would just encourage everyone that's parents to try to make some time to help out with these things. The commitment's really low. It's like a couple of hours, and you can go and really be able to help in a real tangible way. So it's easy to do. I attended a couple of NCOE Board of Education meetings via Zoom, and then also a special board closed session on September 1st, and that completes my board.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
Good evening. You're giving me flashbacks of elementary school, and I'm no longer there, so I appreciate all the work that all the parents contribute to the success of their kids at their schools. And as part of that, I actually had lunch with all of the American Canyon PTA, PTO presidents, as I do annually. I try to do it twice a year, and it's always lovely to I try to do it twice a year, and it's always lovely to connect with them because there's so much turnover at those positions that it's always nice to get a fresh take every year about what's happening at their schools and what their hopes are for the school year. I attended the NCOE Board of Education Special Meeting on the 30th, like many of us here. And on the 6th, trustee Reiser and I got to visit Belair Elementary School, almost said High School. Oh, my gosh, I did not just like age them. And Unidos Middle School, so thank you to principals, principal Tidal and principal Uribe for giving us the visit. And that evening, I also attended the ACHS Back to School Night. It's always interesting to go into different classrooms and meet, you know, the kids' teachers. And, you know, I didn't realize, you never realize how big the campuses are at the high school until you have to walk class to class, and I had to go from the front to the back, to the front to the back. That was my day. Yes, got lots of steps in. So that was fun. And then the next day, on the 7th, I actually got to attend an ACHS freshman football game. That's always exciting to see many of those kids, this is their first time playing football. So, I mean, all the power to them. I definitely won't be on the field with them. And on the 12th, I attended the board mini-session on strategic visioning along with fellow trustees and many of the staff here. And I like the idea of thinking about strategic visioning rather than a strategic plan. And people have been asking me, "Oh, you guys have been, what are you working on?" It's been, you know, a few years. And I always start with strategic visioning. And I think that's the most appropriate way of thinking about this process this year, is just the visioning. And related to that, the next day, then yesterday, I also attended the student summit. And I don't think I could describe it as well as Finn, but I did get some input, one from my own middle schooler who was there and a couple of his friends. And aside from the fact that they got to get out of school that day, they actually did enjoy the process, and they actually said they had fun. So I'm glad that, you know, it was very engaging to them. I also have one comment from a high schooler that said, who said that they weren't quite prepared to answer those big thinking questions, and I think they would have liked to have had that primer, like in the beginning. But I think they were ready to think big and think broad and think for their future. So I think they were all very happy to give their input. And then last night was also the ACHS parent night for 10th and 11th graders, parents. It's always eye-opening when you realize that, you know, their grades starting this year will count towards college admissions for at least the 10th grade, I guess the 11th grade parents already knew. But it's just amazing how much more competitive college applications have become. And I also did a lot of community engagement, as I do every week, only because I walk near campus when I drop off my sixth grader for a bus stop. So that's always, it's always good to connect with the community. And the last thing I will report is on August 29th, I escorted my sixth grader to Representative Mike Thompson's summer reading celebration and met several NVUSD students who committed to reading during summer. It's always great. And I think trustee Water will appreciate that my son tried to read The Hobbit. He got about halfway in, still working on it, but, you know, he was trying to challenge himself to read something a little bit above his reading level. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Reiser?
Thank you very much. A lot of repeats, so I will just be quick with those events. On the 30th, I also attended in person the NCOE Board of Trustees' public hearing for a new countywide charter petition. On the next day, on August 31st, I was part of the Board Policy Committee meeting, along with trustee Hart. And on that day, trustee Chu and I also met with an American Canyon constituent who had questions about the ethnic studies pilot and how that's being developed. So we spent an hour or more with her, sort of explaining the process and answering her questions. On September 1st, there was a special board meeting that I attended. On September 6th, also the site visits to Belair Elementary and to Unidos Middle School. And it just, those were my first site visits for this school year. And people say the same thing in different forms, but, you know, really to get out there and see the kids and see the schools in action and the teachers working so hard, and to talk with the site leaders about what's happening at their site specifically, it's just a really important experience for us to get grounded again in our why of, you know, why we come and do the work that we do on the board here. I had another one in what will be a long series of lasts. I had on September 11th, my last Back to School Night as an NVUSD parent. I happily attended the Napa High Back to School Night and had the same experience. Like, it's funny, the flashback anxiety when the bell rings and you aren't at your next class yet. Like, oh, my gosh, I'm gonna get in trouble. So, but anyway, I want, big thank you to all of the Napa High teachers, the ones that I saw. And I know this is the case across the district at all levels in the organization with the Back to School Nights rolling out. I remember from my years as a teacher, it's a lot of work to get prepared. It can be nerve-wracking to address parents, you know, depending on your comfort level. But it's such an important connection, and as I've said before, you know, as my kids have gotten older, it's a strange thing to lose that strength of connection that you have when they're in elementary school, and you're there at pickup and drop-off, and you know their teachers by name, all of them by name, and they know you by name. And so that Back to School Night opportunity is so great to have that opportunity, to get a little bit of a window in their lives that are so much more separate and independent now. I also attended the special board meeting, the strategic visioning session that we had at Napa Valley College. It was really a fascinating and interesting collaborative and personal experience. I really enjoyed it. It was a great way to kick off. And then I also came for part of the morning of the student summit the next day at Napa Valley College. It was just like a well-oiled machine, the way it all worked there with the collaboration from the core team who were chaperoning the kids, and the site leaders who came with the kids, and our transportation department who rocked it and had bus routes that got everybody there on time. It was a very complex, lots of moving parts. So it was a really, and then also our food services, I know, provided meals for all of the participants. So that was a huge lift across the organization. And I just think it was such a cool experience, I hope, for all the kids. And among other reasons, just to have the chance to come to our Napa Valley College campus and be involved in a sort of, you know, better part of a day experience, going to different classrooms, just giving them a little sort of future-forward taste of college and what they might aspire to themselves. So that was just a huge success, and much congratulations to every department that made that happen. And then I'm just gonna end by saying, reminding people that September is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. And I will say that talking about suicide and sharing resources that are related to mental health and suicide crisis are a really essential part of making, you know, turning around the suicide crisis that we have in our country. I want to thank our district for the commitment that they are following through on of training every staff member who interacts with kids in the QPR Suicide Prevention Protocol. I want to remind everybody that there is a National Mental Health Crisis 24-Hour, Seven Days a Week Crisis Line. You dial or text 988, and you can immediately be connected with mental health services and support. We also here in Napa have a mobile mental health crisis unit. It is not 24/7. It's Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. I would say the phone number, because I have it here, but no one's ready with a pen to write it down. But I'm sure it's available online if you Google the Mobile Response Team. That's a really important innovation in de-escalating situations in which someone's in a mental health crisis. So I'm really glad that our county offers that. And there is also a 24-hour, I am gonna read this phone number, 24/7 Mental Health Crisis Hotline for Napa. So not the 988 number, but that 24-hour health crisis line is 707-253-4711. And I will just close by saying, tell anybody that you know that seems to be struggling or is having a hard time that it's okay to not be okay, and that there are resources and supports readily available in our community to help them. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Water?
All right, thank you, President Gracia. Okay, I conducted my usual community outreach, email and in person. Let's see, on the 30th of August, I made a short visit to Napa High School, had a pleasant visit with a student, a teacher, and a principal. And then on the 5th, I visited Silverado and saw Katie Aaron's class and James Leclerc's class. Very impressed with both of them, and of course, the students are delightful. President Gracia will be interested in knowing that the pizza at lunch was terrific. In fact, the crust has had an upgrade, and everyone liked it. And then I went to the Napa County Office of Education meetings on August 30th and on September 5th. On September 1st, we had a special meeting here. Then, let's see, on the 12th, I think it was two days ago, I went to our prospect meeting, you know, which everyone has described, sort of a futures meeting. And then on the 13th, which was yesterday, I went to the student summit and enjoyed meeting, you know, seeing Dr. Powell, the college president, in action, inviting the students to come around and visit anytime, emphasizing that it was their campus too, and they really liked it. And I actually took some pictures of some of the little posts that children had written about things they needed to do, you know, to prepare, you know, for their future. And one was to develop, people need to develop their own philosophy and belief system. Don't hold on to people that hurt you physically and mentally. Your physical and mental health are top priorities. Don't be ashamed to like something just because it's different. And then, "I want people to start being inclusive!" exclamation point, and not selfish. I thought that was great. I think our future is in good hands, everybody. And then today, I went again to Silverado with Jean Donaldson, the Napa County, trustee of the Napa County Office of Education. We visited Mr. Orozco, Ms. Tisher, and a really delightful mathematics teacher whose name starts with an S and ends with CCI, and I cannot pronounce her name, to save my soul. Okay, thank you. And then we walked out, you know, watched the hordes playing peacefully during milk break, and I had another sensational snack, President Gracia. And this was a croissant with a scrambled egg square and melted cheese. And it was really very good, given to us by Principal Valerga. And I think that's pretty much it, except tomorrow, I'm going to be visiting Shearer with trustee Hart. And I would like to remind everyone that the first week in October is Van Books Week, and I'd like to congratulate Terry Charney, our art teacher up at Belair School, for having one of her paintings picked for the big community art show. And she's gonna be, it's gonna be at the Deon Museum. Is that not wonderful? So, very competitive, and I'm so happy for her success, and I'm sure her students will be. And that's the end.
Okay, thank you. So August 25th, I attended the CSBA Legislative Action Committee meeting. On the 30th, the NCOE Board meeting. The 31st, I had a great tour at McPherson Elementary. Principal Knox showed me all around the campus, and I even got to participate in the fire drill by pulling the fire alarm. That was fun. Then on the 1st, I attended the special board meeting. Also on the 1st, I was at the Vintage High School Home Opener versus Antioch. And then on the 5th, I attended the NCOE Board meeting. On the 6th, I visited Napa High School and had a great tour with Dr. Ainsworth. I was, however, a bit dismayed to see how the kids were suffering in the sweltering classrooms that had no AC. Then on the 6th, I met with the new CSBA Delegate Assembly Member for Region 3D. And then on the 8th, attended the Vintage High School game at Cardinal Newman. On the 11th, I visited Valley Oak High School and had a great tour with Principal Cisneros and her staff. And then also on the 11th, I attended the 9/11 Memorial at Veterans Park in downtown Napa. And then on the 12th, I attended the Arbinger Training, and also then on the 12th, the Visioning Board Meeting at Napa Valley Community College that many trustees have already talked about. And then on the 13th, I attended the Finance Committee meeting. And that ends my report. All right, we'll move on now to item 2, Board Representative Reports. Item 2A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
We have not met yet, but we do have a meeting planned for Monday. So next board meeting, I will have a report for you.
Okay, looking forward to it. 2B, City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
Okay. 2C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives?
Oh, we've got one coming up in October.
No one can hear your mic's on.
We have a meeting coming up in October.
Okay.
Yes, we do, the 24th.
Got it. And then 2D, Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives, we also have not yet met, but there is a meeting coming up. All right, on to item H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Thank you, President Gracia. Good evening, NVUSD Board of Education and community. I'm so happy to report that our staff and students are successfully settling into the 23-24 school year. Today, I visited four schools: Redwood Middle School, Belair Elementary School, Northwood Elementary School, and Vintage High School. It was great to see Mr. Giddings, Troy Giddings from NVA there at Northwood, who was dropping off goodies for all of the new teachers, so that was really fun to run into you out in the field. Our principals mentioned repeatedly that the beginning of this year feels like the smoothest start since before the global pandemic. I'm grateful we've been able to address some, not all, of the staffing issues that persisted through the pandemic, but we've made tremendous progress under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Dana Page and her team. Although staffing shortages continue to be an issue in education everywhere, NVUSD leadership keeps working hard to fill positions so that schools can operate as whole as possible while also ensuring we have substitutes available for classroom coverage. I also would like to take a moment during today's report to thank the Napa Valley Community Foundation for their ongoing support and generosity. The foundation just awarded us another grant donation of $10,000 to support our avid programs district-wide. So thank you to the donors of the Cleanse Family Fund for being such strong, continuous supporters of college readiness, particularly for our students from under-resourced communities. As was mentioned by several of the trustees, I also want to express my gratitude, enthusiasm, and appreciation for the two strategic visioning and planning events that transpired this last week. First, thank you to the board members for investing several hours of your time on Tuesday evening during the board mini-session for the first official kickoff event of this very lengthy, year-long process where we will set the vision and reimagine the future for NVUSD schools. And then, of course, as everyone mentioned, the student summit. What a fantastic day. It was such a great day because of how our organization came together to ensure the day's success, and mostly because the day was centered around students. Centering student voice in the strategic visioning and planning process sets the tone for how we will approach the work for the remainder of the year. So during the student summit, I have lots of fun facts about what happened. 5,000-plus student comments were submitted. 875-plus photos were taken of students and staff throughout the day. Over 300 lunches were prepared by the NASH team for students, staff, and volunteers. And I want to thank Kristen and Mohammed for attending to the kids the entire time they were there, making sure that they were well-fed. Almost 300 students attended from all the NVUSD TK8 middle and high schools. Almost 300 students attended from all the NVUSD TK8, middle and high schools. 100 NVUSD Chromebooks were delivered by our tech team and utilized. 36 leaders provided feedback during the board mini-session the night prior to the Student Summit. 35 core team members planned the entire event. 20 middle and high school principals and staff members directly supported all of the planning and implementation. 10 amazing staff chaperones attended with our students. 10 core team docents led our students and chaperones through the carousel of activities. Eight of our bus drivers transported our students to and from the event. The buses were on time, not the trains. Five Napa Valley College classrooms were utilized as spaces for exploration and stations for students to brainstorm and provide their feedback. Four community school leaders attended. Four tech team members kept students connected the entire day. Four elementary principals attended just to learn more and be alongside our secondary students. And three aides provided interpretation for the multilingual learner, Spanish speakers, who attended during the Student Summit. The student comments, trustee Water lifted some of them up. They were so insightful. I also took a ton of pictures and have been reading them and referencing them to really ground me in my work. Our students have so many of the answers we need. It was an impactful day for NVUSD where adults provided a large-scale opportunity to learn from our students. So often, we think about students learning from us. It was fantastic to flip that and have us learn from our students. Thank you also, of course, to Dr. Powell for opening the doors of Napa Valley College for this event. And lastly, I have to thank Julie Bordas, our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, who just has done an extraordinary job leading the coordination of these launch events for the Napa Valley Unified School District as we reimagine our future together. So with that, I'm going to toss to the Assistant Superintendents who are going to provide reports for the respective divisions that they oversee. And we will start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Right. Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti and Student Board Representative McGrath. Tonight, I'd like to highlight some of the efforts in HR to hire, develop and retain the best classified employees. On August 30th, Assistant Director Gina DeLuca and Coordinator Kate Gogger represented NVUSD at an employment fair at Sonoma State University. This particular fair was aimed at students looking for part-time jobs while going to school. And we also got some attention from future teaching candidates who plan to come back once they've graduated. So that was also a little fun bonus of being there. The NVUSD HR team is hosting a similar recruitment event for classified positions on October 11th in Napa and October 18th in American Canyon. But both events will be from 3:30 to 6 o'clock. We're encouraging current employees to bring a job seeker to the event, and we will offer a special prize drawing for those employees who bring a buddy to talk to us about some of the great employment opportunities we have to offer. We're also working hard to improve our fill rate specifically on instructional assistant personal care jobs. So this is another job like bus drivers and teachers where there's a nationwide shortage. So with the new agreement from, that we worked on from CSCA through their negotiations team, we plan to raise the pay range for this position by 5%, as well as offering a hiring bonus of $1,250. For current employees interested in this position who need to take the instructional assistant exam, we are also offering a stipend for completing the IA course through the Napa Valley Adult School, and we will pay for the exam fee up to two times. So look also for a video coming soon on our careers webpage and on Facebook featuring some of our great personal care instructional assistants, and features the incredibly rewarding work they do in providing a supportive environment and specialized services to help our students thrive. Lastly, we'd like every staff member, parent and student to respond to the Second Calendar Committee Survey. In this version of the survey, we are trying to dig deeper into the NVUSD community's opinion about the three-week winter break. There's a lot of history around this three-week winter break. When it was adopted, it occurred over a decade ago. And there was many good reasons why we adopted the three-week break at the time. Before we proceed to recommend another three years of calendars based on our current model, we think it's important to raise this question in today's context. The survey is available on the NVUSD website. It has also went out in an email to staff. It's in the parent newsletter, and it'll be pushed out through a variety of other venues over the course of the next month, including to our students in 10th grade social studies classes. The survey closes on October 8th, so please provide your input before then. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we'll have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees Operational Services.
Good evening, President Gracia, NVSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on Operational Services. Tonight, I'd like to acknowledge the role of a few Operational Services Directors who have been participating in the current NVSD's strategic vision and planning, specifically Director of Operations Gloria Aguirre, Director of Transportation Justin Binion and Director of Food Service Kristen Teakell. First, the inclusion of these managers in the process is truly inspirational. To know that members of the operation team will be responsible for helping NVSD develop a community-driven vision comprising a graduate portrait, an adult portrait and an assistant portrait, and refresh core value will be extremely beneficial for effective employee relations. But more importantly, sends a clear message that everyone in the system, everyone in the system has a role in the education of our students. Additionally, the voice of each manager will also be heard to help NVSD develop a strategic plan that will initiate the implementation of the vision, including integrating strategies and actions for all three parts of the vision. I want to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, along with the Director of Communications Julie Bordas for being purposeful and intentional when selecting members for the NVSD Strategic Vision and Planning Team. On that note, I also want to praise the three Operational Services Directors for their recent leadership role in the Student Summit. Yes, it does help to have the Food Service and Transportation Director on the team to feed and transport students. But the lift that Ms. Teakell took on in order to feed everyone at the Student Summit, plus the rest of the school district, and the task Mr. Binion was given to transport over 260 students within the school district, plus all the regular bus routes, was truly exceptional. And at least I not forget to mention Ms. Aguirre, who with no formal training as an educator, took on the role as a docent for high school students, and from the reports I heard was a natural, has a natural gift of speaking with students. Again, thank you, trustees, Dr. Masetti and Ms. Bordas for empowering members of operation team. And then finally, I want to acknowledge the entire Food Service Department. Last week, just over 7,000 lunches were served district-wide on one day, which was a record. But this, but this week, just over 7,200 lunches were served on one day, which broke the record, which means that almost half the NVSD students enjoyed lunch on this particular day. Yes, the entree was pizza. But without practicing the cycle of continuous improvement, the food service staff would not have been able to deliver pizzas so desirable that are fresh, never frozen, tossed by hand and topped with a delicious homemade sauce along with fresh shredded mozzarella cheese. The partnership that has been established with Tasty Pizza, a family-owned business based in Fairfield, who supplies the pizza dough, has proved to be quite successful along with the other ingredients, hence the number of lunches served. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Love it. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
I'm not sure if I can top Tasty Pizza, but I'll give it, I'll give it a try.
Impossible.
Impossible. Good evening, President Gracia, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative McGrath and the NVUSD community. September has been an exciting month for student literacy as we focus on Annual Board Priority Number Two, which is reading and writing across the curriculum. Over 70 secondary teachers began cohorts this month that are dedicated to developing their own expertise in reading and writing. We also kicked off the piloting of curricular resources to support secondary English teachers and students in Tier One literacy instruction. We began the first cohort, in addition to all of that, we also began the first cohort of the Writing Revolution, and they had won the first of six trainings. These two-hour after-school sessions are full of ready-to-use writing strategies that are deeply rooted in research and applicable to all grade levels. This first cohort included teachers from grades third through 12th grade who teach science, math, English and social studies. It is truly a collaboration between elementary and secondary, multiple content areas, and even technology. Our trainers mentioned we were the first school district they had worked with whose tech department had gone the extra mile to ensure teachers' students' accounts interface with their Google classrooms. So we want to definitely thank the Technology Department for going that extra mile. In addition to the Writing Revolution, we launched an ASPIRE cohort comprised of 37 secondary English language arts and English language development teachers and principals from school sites across the district. ASPIRE aligns with the Letters Science of Reading training that has been enthusiastically received by our elementary teachers, but this is geared to the unique needs of our middle and high school teachers. Secondary teachers will focus on word recognition, language, reading and writing comprehension over the course of the year. And I know that this is training that they are eagerly, eagerly anticipating. The cohort will meet together over the course of the year to share their learning and reflect on classroom application. So it's not a one-and-done. It's a year-long process of learning. A smaller cohort of teachers within this group is piloting a program called Power Up, an online reading intervention tool that adjusts to the levels of each student's, student's needs. Our tech department, again, did a phenomenal job of rostering students and teachers to the Power Up program. As a result, initial student assessments within Power Up were seamless, and we have that, the initial assessment of where students are in their reading. In our effort to ensure high-quality content curricular resources are, are in use across our district, our high school, this is a lot of, there's quite a bit going on. Our high school core ELA teachers trained with their new pilot materials this week. Teachers were excited to see how this curriculum could support novel studies, writing and differentiation for learners at all levels. The successful start is due largely to the work of the teachers on the ELA Curriculum Committee who last year selected, carefully selected pilot materials and a timeline that supported the needs of ELA teachers and their students. So it was done collaboratively. Our work on Board Annual Priority Number Four, which is Innovation and Alignment of Career Readiness Programs, extends to our students in special education as well. On Thursday, September 7th, the specialized vocational services staff supported students from Napa High, Vintage, American Canyon in attending the Napa Valley College 49th Annual Transfer Days Event. Students were able to learn about, more about campus life at Napa Valley College as well as the support they can receive in a wide range of services available, available to them through their attendance there. And lastly, to strengthen our partnership with parents, we have grown NVUSD's Parent Learning Series. We have partnered with Fresno State University to expand our, our course offerings to include even more relevant and timely topics for families. Online classes begin next week, and registration is open now for courses such as Digital Literacy, Financial Literacy, Conversational English, Parenting Skills for Social Media, which I know is very relevant today, and Social Emotional Wellness. Participants who complete the course requirements will receive a certificate of completion from Fresno State University at the end of the four-week course. Thank you. That concludes my report.
I will be providing an update to the board later tonight about our budget, so I will forego my, my update here.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Manguala. And that was almost as delicious as pizza. Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. With that, that concludes the executive staff reports for the evening.
It is hard to compete with pizza. All right, we'll move on to Item I, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A call and motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless a discussion of item or items is requested by board members.
A move to approve. Second?
All right, that's a first by trustee Chu and a second by trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, thank you. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to J, Presentation and Discussion Items. J1, General Services. J1A, Introduction to California School Board Association's Recommended Policy Updates, June 2023.
Yes, trustees, these were reviewed by our Policy Committee at the first Policy Committee meeting for the 23-24 school year. These are the June standard updates provided by CSBA. They're here tonight for introduction and for our protocol. We'll come back for action at the September 28th board meeting.
Do I have any discussion or questions on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 2, Business Services. J2A, Unaudited Actuals Presentation. Mr. Manguala.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community about our unaudited actuels. So as background, school districts create a budget. We update it twice, and then we settle up for the year. So essentially, we settle up as of 6:30. We need to do that by 9:15, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. Next slide, please. So while inflation has trended down substantially, it is far above the Federal Reserve target of 2%. The Federal Reserve is watching inflation closely, and if inflation does tick up, they will continue to increase interest rates, which puts the economy at risk. And so inflation continues to have a negative impact, especially on our employees here in Napa Valley Unified. And so just for example, a data point that we look at are healthcare rates. And so healthcare rates were just announced. Kaiser rates, for example, are going up 11% in January. So our, our employees are negatively impacted by inflation. Next slide. This is a very interesting and colorful slide from School Services. And so what it, what it talks about are, is just the impact of inflation. So once inflation is within the system, it's very hard for it to go away. When inflation goes up, employees demand more money. You increase their wages, then they have more money to spend on goods and services. What does that do? That creates more inflationary pressure. People go on vacations. They spend money on cars. They do things like that. And what does that do? That causes more pressure to increase wages. And so while inflation is starting to go in the right direction, there's still a lot of pressure. It might be some time before inflation goes back down to 2%, which is our historic average. Some of the things that we're also seeing, we're seeing impacts on the housing market, like something we would never expect. Everyone said that the housing market was going to crash when interest rates went up, but because we're just coming out of a period of very low interest rates, people just decided to hold on to their low-interest-rate 30-year mortgages and not sell their houses. And so again, what does that do? That creates more demand for housing. It increases housing prices. It creates a housing, housing shortage for our employees who are having a hard time finding even a place to rent. Next slide. So in terms of employee shortages, so low employment rates, reduced population in California, the great resignation, high inflation that have led to employee shortages in most industries, especially in, in education. Next slide. So what does it look like at the local level? So while, while it's not as bad in as many districts, Napa Valley Unified is impacted by employee shortages. We closed the year with many open positions, and we've had a especially difficult time filling certain positions. And so this has been especially true in special education. If you look at our total openings at the end of the last fiscal year, we actually had 62 open positions, which I've never seen before, a very, very large number. So going from having to, you know, lay people off because we were overstaffed to having employee shortages. So a big switch in the other direction. And so to put it in scale, 4% of all of our positions were open. So very large open rate there. So again, we will need to continue to use creative methods along with substantial pay increases to address this. So Dana Page and I and the whole organization have been working very closely to use data to look at some of the positions that need kind of an off-cycle increase, like IAPCs we've talked about, bus drivers, other positions where we find just, you know, an abnormal number of openings. We will continue to need to increase compensation in those areas. The other thing that, which I've already mentioned, you know, employee healthcare costs have increased dramatically, especially for Kaiser, which has, which has changed the model that they're using. So whereas in the past, they've, they've just looked at the pool to determine whether they increase rates, but what CalPERS has done is they've taken the entire pool, including people who are in PPO plans, created one pool. So the Kaiser rates actually didn't just go up because the pool in Kaiser went up. It's because the risk pool in general went up. Probably the vast majority, I'd say probably, the vast majority of the increase is due to the overall pool change, not just for Kaiser rates. Next slide. So what this slide shows is, is compensation across the county. And so I wanted to just bring to the board's attention what it looks like at the teacher level. So while Napa Unified only receives about one-third of the funding as some of the basic aid districts, we we still have to compete with them across the board. So whether it's the programs we offer or compensation to attract employees. And so when you look at the line, the horizontal line, you can see on the left, step one, that we're, we're below the average compensation across the county, and we're substantially lower than the high end. And so the average across the county is 70,000. Our, our first-year teacher makes 65,000, so we're still 5,000 below that. When you compare that to the maximum, it's almost $20,000 difference, just for the first-year teacher. When you look at the max step, so we're kind of end career, you can see it's $131,000 on average. Napa maxes out at 115,000, and the maximum is 168,000. So, I mean, I don't know that we'll ever be able to compete to that level. It would be nice to be able to say that we have the funding to do that. Rates of increases for LCFF districts are going up higher than property values in the area. And so what you will see is compensation increases that are closer to the actual cost of living adjustment, which does exceed what's happening in the property market. So you, you will see, for example, the governor, it's a part of the budget that we adopted, that there was a cost of living adjustment of 8.22%. LCFF districts will, will need to offer compensation as close as possible to that because there's a lot of inflation. It is hard to attract and retain employees. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, school districts do not calculate their reserve percentage as part of, of tonight's presentation, or part of un-audited actuals, I should say. So this slide is a summary of our budget at budget adoption to remind the board and the community of the, the impact of declining enrollment. And so this slide shows what our reserves look like with the impact of declining enrollment and the impact of Maya Comas Charter School. And so I, I do want to remind the community that that first column there that has our reserves at 25%, 25% is about the state average. It is the lowest in the county, so we, we do have the lowest reserves in the county. And to put 25% in perspective, what does 25% mean? 25% is about three months. It's three months expenses. So that's the same number that they recommend for individuals. So when people, people love to come out here, and very recently even, said that we have enormous reserves, well, that's just not true. So it's easy to come out and take out of perspective and say, wow, you have a large number there. You have 26 million set aside for reserve for uncertainty, and you have 39 committed for continued operation and declining enrollment. It, it, it doesn't put into perspective what's really happening. What's really happening is we are fairly large districts. So remember that in terms of the size of districts, there are 1,000 school districts in the state. Only 100 of them have an enrollment over 1,000, right? So what does that mean? Most school districts are very, very, very small. Or to put it otherwise, only 10% of the school districts in the state have an enrollment over 1,000. So we like to think of ourselves as a medium-sized school district, but statistically, we're actually a pretty large school district sitting at about 16,000. So when you look at those numbers, yes, like the somebody who's looking at their individual budget or an individual school, wow, that seems like a large number. But when you adjust it due to the size of our school district, we're sitting at three months, three months expenses. So it just, I can't stress that enough, the importance of that. A couple of other things to keep, actually, go to the next slide, please. Sorry. So what does this slideshow, this, this slide shows the results of what we're at in un-audited actuals. So again, we have an increase in fund balance of about $2.5 million. A reserve committed for decline, for declining enrollment, and a, and a reserve put aside for economic uncertainty. And so again, there've been lots of comments about our reserves. But again, overall, this is where we need to be, where we are below the average for the county. We're sitting, sitting at three months salary. But we've also, because of this, we've been able to do a lot of really good things. Like, you know, we're finally in a position where we can add programs and services to reduce class sizes. Now, for example, we reduced EL class sizes from 24 to one to 20 to one in this current year. We've added additional mainstreaming opportunities for our special education students. Last year, we added elementary prep. We've reduced the number of combination classes. And we very recently added two small-k middle school programs in response to community demand. And so we are in a position where we can continue to evaluate programs, and we find that they're successful. We, we have potential to add programs. And so I am proud of the hard work that we did to get there. But just as a reminder of where we're at just a couple of years ago, when our reserves were 3%, we had to make some very sudden and difficult decisions that negatively impacted the community. It, it, it was very hard on our community for that to happen. And, and nobody wants to go back to closing schools, laying off employees and reducing, reducing programs. Next slide. So what are the benefits of having healthy reserves? Again, reserves give you time. You, you always want to avoid deficit spending, but if it happens, you have those reserves to address that. They also give you the ability to remain fiscally solvent and compensate and attract the best employees possible. And just a reminder, reserves are one-time money. Once they're gone, they're gone. Next slide. So again, reserves are one-time money. Once they're spent, they're gone. And declining enrollment will, will, will deplete our reserves over time. We're in a position now where, again, we have time to address declining enrollment in a thoughtful manner. We didn't have the time to do that before. I'm, I'm very proud that we have that time to do that now. Next slide. So what are our next steps? So our next step is to continue our work with our compensation formula and work with our union leadership. So historically, we've made an announcement and paid our employees over, over two months. And so what we've historically done is, over the last couple of years, we've had an ongoing compensation increase in the month of November and in the month of October. We've, we've processed any one-time payment that we pay. So we, we anticipate that we'll, we'll be on schedule to do something like that. Some of the other work that we need to do is to continue to work closely with human resources to address employee shortages, prepare for first interim. Another thing that we'll be starting, starting is starting an employee benefits committee. So we do need to work really closely with our labor partners and our employees to look and see if CalPERS is the best value for our district. And so we do get benefits as a part of a large pool through CalPERS. We need to look at that very closely to see if this is the best opportunity, potentially publish a request for proposals. And if we get a good quote on our risk pool, move towards a, a different option than CalPERS. And with that, I think that's the last slide. And open up to any questions.
Trustee Water?
We had a, we had a caller a little while ago who said we had 90-plus million dollars in reserves. Is that true?
That is not true. That is, that is incorrect.
He is going to be so disappointed.
Yeah, so crushed.
President Gracia is very upset about that.
They, they, you know, there, there's been some confusion. There've been some statements made in the press. And I'll just be honest and say, to the courts, I won't use names, but statements were made that were incorrect, where they look at fund balance. So fund balance is not the same thing as reserves. So fund balance looks at everything, including things that are not, not liquid, right? So when you look at reserves, we're essentially saying, what is our liquid cash? That if we, if we had an emergency, what would happen? When you look at fund balance, you, you can, it's like comparing fund balance to reserve, it's, is the equivalent of comparing somebody's retirement account to somebody else's checking account. It's just not valid. So to say we have more than somebody else, it's like saying, this person has a retirement account that's bigger than somebody else's checking account. It's just not the same. It's an invalid comparison. And it's unfortunate that was made, but that was, that was a mistake that somebody made.
Thank you.
Other comments? Trustee Chu?
So I wanted to go back to the certificated salary schedule, step one and max step. I, I, it's just really amazing to me that we are funded the least out of all of the school districts in the county, yet we are in the middle, right? I think it took a lot of work for us to be even competitive at the lower half of the end. But we're still not competitive enough. And so, I mean, I, I think that we always worry about that and about like, how, how can we retain our staff when this is happening? And if, you know, we, we get competitive districts near us, that are they going to be, I mean, I hate to say it, poaching our teachers? And that, that's a big, that's a big concern of mine, for sure. Because if we're already suffering from staffing shortages, it's just gonna make it worse.
And, and, and we know the importance of a teacher, our classified employees, our management, everyone.
Everyone.
Yeah, the, the, the way to attract the best employees is to offer competitive compensation. And I, I can't tell you the number of people have, who have told me, you know, real heartfelt stories about benefits. Like, like, I'm concerned, my benefit rate, you know, went, went up. What, what can you do for me? Like, what can you do? And, you know, it's, it's very, it's very difficult. So it's, it's hard, what's happening with inflation and the economy, it's hard on employees. It's, you know, our, our, again, going through the list of our employees, our employees in general do not have the ability to, to afford living in the area.
Yeah.
So they're leaving, and it makes it really hard, especially on the lower end, yeah.
So I think we really have to keep on working towards increasing that compensation as much as we can. I mean, just to be competitive. Thank you.
Trustee Reiser?
I just wanted to make one comment about, Assistant Superintendent Manguala, you talked about, you know, we, the district at the time, where we were at the fiscal cliff, right? We were at 3.3% reserve or 3% reserve, which would have triggered our district going into state receivership. So I just wanted to highlight, because I did teach in a district that went into state receivership. I, I taught in Vallejo City Unified School District during that time, that it was taken over by the state, and then the city itself went bankrupt. That as difficult and pressured as that time period was, and I did not sit on the board yet at that time, but I would venture to say that as rushed and pressured as that decision-making felt to the leadership team at that time, that you were, I'm sure, exponentially more thoughtful and careful in your decision-making about cuts than a state receivership-appointed leader would have been, whose goal would have been to just, you know, balance the financial situation as quickly as possible. You know, I believe that there was an enormous amount of thought and care, difficult as those decisions were, and that the approach was much more careful and thoughtful and done sort of surgically than, you know, a receivership would have been someone coming in sort of with a machete, taking a machete to our programs. And so I want to praise the, the, the district leadership at that time for, for doing all of the difficult and very unpopular work it took to maintain the control so that those difficult decisions were made by the district itself and not by a, a third party coming in, in, in a much more dire set of circumstances. And then the, the other point I just wanted to highlight again, because it just blows my mind every time I hear it, and I've heard it so many times. But just, you know, within our county, we, we, we hear a lot of criticism about how we compare to other districts in the county, and in particular about our test scores. And, and again, I just want to highlight that our teachers are, you know, working with a budget of about $11,000 per student. And that in the basic aid districts, which are the other four districts in our county, and to whom we are often negatively compared by people who are interested in criticizing and finding fault in the work that our district is doing. They're working with what, like 33, 30, somewhere around 33, $35,000 per kid, per year funding. So, so to make comparisons, I mean, I just can't help but make this point because you were talking about the sort of unfair, you know, unrealistic comparisons, apples to oranges. That I, I just want the community to understand that it's apples to oranges. You know, when you're looking at districts with much smaller pupil count that are getting $35,000 per pupil, and teachers that are, I think I heard that the, like, the kindergarten classes in St. Helena have 11 students and an aide. So you're talking about a five or six to one adult-to-student ratio in kindergarten, which is so different than the funding and the reality that we live here in the, the only LCFF and the, the only large-scale district in our county. So I just, for the callers who called in full of, of, of critique of the work that we do, I just wanted to remind the community of that context. And that, you know, you would think that if $35,000 per kid in a ratio of five or six to one, you know, students to adult, would result in just like incredibly impressive test scores. And, and that's not what I'm seeing when we compare test scores across county districts, so.
It's, it's not. And, and I confirm that, and just to kind of address that, so two things I'd like to address. So one, in, in terms of test scores, you know, the Instructional and Services Department, they're, they're doing a lot of incredible work. I'm sure you, you've heard what, what Pat Andrew Jennings spoke about tonight. You've seen all the curriculum adoptions and the different things that we're doing. It takes time. It's nothing that happens overnight. So obviously, our, our primary job is to educate students when you look at test scores. It's just one measure. There's lots of other things that we can look at. You know, if you take the high school level, for example, you know, in my mind, it's not a, it's not a really good representation of what's happening at the high school. There's a lot of other, you know, data points that we can use. When you take the high school in isolation, they only test in one grade level. So they don't test in ninth, they don't test in 10th, and they only test in 11th. And when the high school kids will ask a question, it's a very common one, anyone who's been here at a high school site, you hear it. Does this count towards my grade? No, it doesn't. Okay, thank you very much. I'll be done in a couple of minutes. And so that's, that's typically what it looks like. You know, I, I, I would wish it'd be something different, but that is what happens a lot, what I've witnessed myself at, at, at the high school level. And we know this, there's, there's challenges, there's a lot. Our standards, when you look at our standards across the state, what some of the data points, people missed out on some really important things. Like, for example, across the state, test scores generally go down the higher the grade level you go up, across the state. So if it's happening across the state, you have to ask yourself, well, what's driving that? Are, are kids not learning? Or they, they, or something bad happening to them over time in school districts? I would say no. I would say that there's a problem with the standards. When you look at the standards and how they're assessed over time, the standards get much, much more difficult. We have a very difficult test that kids give. Again, not making excuses, we all have work to do. Our primary job is educating students, but there are some problems there. And, and again, a lot of the comparisons that I've heard at the mic, you know, the, the data that I've, that I've seen in, in terms of looking at the charter data and looking at River, they were not valid comparison. There were comparisons comparing different grade levels, talking about a school in general that did not represent the school district completely. So what I, what I am committed to doing is we have a very strong data team. When we bring our cast scores to the district, to the, our board meeting, which I think will be in November, we've created a tool, we, we will be able to look at test scores across the state. So we'll be proud about that. I talked to our CBOs about that. So we already have it created. We just need to upload the entire file. So every district across our county will be able to use it. We're gonna, as a service, we're gonna make that available. So we'll be able to have discussions about what do our second language learners look like at our schools compared to other schools within the county and other schools that look like us, right? It's easy to say, well, this school does really good, but like, let's drill down and look at the details about that. And like, what, what happens with our Latino students here in Napa? And how does that compare at Valley? And how does that compare to Palo Alto? Or how does that compare to San Francisco? So we will have the ability to do that. So again, we're always looking at improving, but also being really clear about our data. And then in terms of what you talked about, being in a district that went through state receivership. So if I could just quote somebody you all know, so Paul Dostario, he's a retired CBO, who's helped, who's worked for the district in a number of ways, since we've known him for a couple of years. So one of his quotes that he told us early on is, "You don't ever want to go through state receivership because there's always a second bankruptcy that happens right afterwards." Because what happens is the state, when they come in, they just slash and burn, and they just vote down things that are not gonna like get results and, and things that they, they vote for the cuts that need to happen. But the system hasn't learned to fix itself, right? So when they leave, the system just goes back to its old ways. So if there's dysfunction, if there's too many employees, if there's too many schools, that hasn't been addressed. And so by us doing the hard work, instead of failing and letting somebody else do it, we, we have those systems in place. We have staffing formulas in place right now, where, yeah, it was really tight and it was tough in, in the beginning. But now we have the ability to gradually add staffing where it's appropriate. And we see issues, and we have the ability to evaluate programs. So you never want to go through state receivership. You want to do the hard work yourself.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
One of the slides that I always like to focus on, speaking of our reserves, is not just looking at the 2324 school year, but how it has that foresight without knowing in concrete what the funding is going to be at the state for those, each of the years. But that's how delicate our reserves always are. You may look at that 25% now, but if you jump to, to school year 2526, it goes down to 6%. So that's how delicate it is. And so the one-time money, the funding that comes in, the hard work has to continue. It can't just stop with just being short-sighted, looking at this one school year. And that's one of the things that I mentioned to, to folks of the community when they have questions is that you've got to think that, you know, years ahead. is that you've got to think, you know, years ahead, not just this school year. We're not making decisions for the future of what's happening now, yes, we are. However, what's the impact of that in years to come? So I always look at that, because that's a 19% drop, and that's huge.
And that's what we're required to do. So remember, we don't look at our reserves for just one year, we're required by law to look at it for three years. And so because of the way that funding comes, we're always funded on the hire of the current year enrollment or the prior three years. And so the way, what does that mean? That means when we say we have a 25% reserve, oh, and declining enrollment, and my comments isn't impacting you, that's misstating the facts. The fact is, is that nobody is impacted in the current year by something that's opening up in the current year. It's in the out-years. And so the impact is in year two and year three. So yes, it is factors in there, and you can see the impact on it. It does not impact us in the current year, it impacted us in year two and year three.
So when you're looking at these reserve amounts, should we be looking at the current year or should we be looking at year three?
Year three is the most important one. So, you know, again, the current year is the past. Year two and year three is what we anticipate for the future with declining enrollment and other impacts. So we are required by law, by maybe 1,200, to have balanced reserves in all three years. If we don't hit the 3% minimum reserve in year three, then we would have, receive a qualified letter from the county, which we have received in the past. And essentially, what it says is, is that we may not be able to pay our bills in the future. So it's basically, and it serves as an early warning for a school district that you have to make some serious cuts and make some changes, or you're looking at state takeover, which is why we do three years.
And can you remind us what that third-year reserve was projected to be?
In the 6% range.
So really, the number that we should be talking about is not 25%, but 6%. That's the relevant number for the discussions that we're having today.
That's correct.
To further point out, that's 4% below the board policy of the 10%.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Student Board Member McGrath.
I just wanted to go back to what you said about the student approach to testing. That's very, very true. I've never really heard anyone be like, oh, yeah, I'm going to crush my test scores. Like, it's very much like a, let's get this out of the way, let's get this done, let me get to lunch. Like, this isn't, so I just want to say that that's very accurate.
Thank you. Or we could add, like, I'll see at Starbucks in about 15 minutes.
Exactly, yes, yes, exactly.
Well, I can tell you what happens when you do A, B, C, D, C, B, A, in an exact pattern. You're getting the low 20%.
I think you're better off choosing a column and just going straight down.
Statistically speaking, you are correct, yeah. 25% chance, if you pick the same answer every time.
Yeah. Dr. Masetti.
No, thank you for all of your questions and comments, trustees. I just want to take a moment to recognize the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala and also our Executive Director of Fiscal Services, Jenna Burrows. You know, this is an extraordinary time for our fiscal teams in school districts to navigate with all of the declining enrollment in California. And it is so true, I am so grateful that the team that we have here is a strong team, and that we did take ownership of all of those difficult decisions and put the systems in place, because it's with that ownership that we can make sure that we've got the infrastructure and the integrity in that infrastructure to make sure that we can fulfill the promises that we make. To just quickly, only in NVUSD do you take an unaudited actual presentation connected to test scores, connected to all of the topics, right? But that's really important, because we see how all of those pieces connect and impact one another. And school districts that are trying to really implement continuous improvement and impact the educational lives of students, you know, the ones that can do that well are the ones that see all those connections. So I'm grateful that we have that insight here on the board. I'm grateful for the quality of our team. And if our finance team didn't have the capabilities that they did, I just want to make another connection. You know, we've launched all the strategic visioning and planning, strategic visioning and planning that we talked a lot about during a board and staff comments. And, you know, if you're a school district that's going and engaging in strategic visioning and planning, and you are not engaging in that work from a position of fiscal stability and strength, you may make a lot of commitments to your community that you are not going to be able to fulfill. There will be a lot of false promises, a lot of great ideas, but a lack of ability to execute on those ideas and those initiatives. So I feel so grateful that we are in a position where we are poised to be able to go out, ask the community, to engage in this reimagining and this visioning, and then make commitments that we know that we're going to be able to fulfill and sustain, because that's what's going to be key in the long-term viability of our school district, but most importantly, in terms of impacting the educational experience of our kids. So thank you so much for all of your hard work. I know how much goes into unaudited actuals and closing the books. It's a fury and a frenzy, but you and Ms. Burrows have done an excellent job, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti, and thank you for the connection to the real work that we do. And yeah, me too, I'm very happy that we're in a position to, if we make commitments about doing things, that we have the ability to do it. So CBOs always get nervous about big numbers, I'll be honest. I always get nervous about big numbers and big expenditures. But with that said, if we have the ability to do it, I'm going to be the first one to push that we do it. I'm not, I am, I'll be really clear, I am not here to build a super reserve or do something like that. I know that we hear, as a former teacher, that we need to put the money in the hands of our teachers in front of our students and build up wonderful programs. So we are committed to doing that.
Not that there's anything wrong with a very large reserve. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Seeing no more comment then from the board, we will now move for our break. See you in about five. Okay, and we are back. We're now on to item J3, Instructional Services, J3A, Introduction of Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for Elementary School.
Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Member McGrath. I'm happy to be here this evening to present, introduce this beautifully illustrated and beautifully written book to you this evening. It's written by Sandy Santa Maria, a somewhat local author. She's here in the Bay Area. And the Napa Book Mine is bringing her in to present to some of our elementary schools in the district, and they are very generously donating a copy of this book to all of the first-grade students to whom she presents. So it's here as an introduction for you tonight, and then we'll ask you to vote on this at the next board meeting. So I'm open to any questions you might have? No? Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Where could, where could we buy the book? Do they have it at Book Mine?
They have it at Book Mine, you're welcome to buy it at Book Mine. I would suggest buying at Book Mine, that's a great place to buy books. Thank you.
And thank you so much to Book Mine for being our patron.
Yes, thank you.
I know nothing like local businesses who just turned 10 years in having been a bookstore, but I visited them yesterday, and they just have a beautiful location. And so it's really great to see those connections with our community.
Yes, we're very, very thankful to Napa Book Mine, thank you.
Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, I think we're good then, thank you, moving on. K, Action Items, K1, Business Services, K1A, Unaudited Actual Report.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K1B, Purchase of Additional Tableau Licenses.
Move to approve. Data sharing agreement with Imagine. You did C instead of B.
I said Purchase of Additional Tableau Licenses.
K1B, Data Sharing Agreement.
Imagine Language and Literacy.
Imagine Learning.
Oh, President Gracia, when you introduce the item, you introduce it as K1B, and so I think that's what.
It's what it says on my agenda.
And it's different online.
Yeah, it's different online.
Oh, it is, they flipped, they just flipped it from online to the paper one, sorry. Go ahead, move to approve.
What do we approve?
I see, yeah, online.
Agenda online, B and C are inverted compared to the paper copy.
Okay, so I think we need to go with the online version, because that's the more official. So let's go with K1B, Data Sharing Agreement with Imagine Language and Literacy.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this somewhat confusing item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K1C, Purchase of Additional Tableau Licenses.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K2, Human Resources, K2A, Point Loma Teaching Internship Agreement.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K2B, Point Loma University Student Teaching Agreement.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K3, Instructional Services, K3A, Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for Middle School.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K3B, Core Instructional Material Adoption for Middle and High Schools.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K3C, Memorandum of Understanding with Napa County Bicycle Coalition.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K4, Operational Services, K4A, Contract with MAS Services.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K5, School Planning and Construction, K5A, SPC 18.2-24, Contract with F3 and Associates.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, and then K5B was pulled, so we'll move on to K5C, SPC 7.2-24, Request to Surplus One Relocatable Classroom.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Reiser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, we're now on to the informational section of our meeting. L1, General Services, L1A, Curriculum and Student Support Committee. I believe there is some information attached. Is there any desire for discussion on this item? No. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, and then Facilities and Technology is L1B, there was no meeting. And then Facilities, sorry, Information, L1C is the Finance Committee. They did meet, but those minutes will be provided at the next meeting. And then L1D, the Policy Committee, they did meet, there is information attached. Is there any desire for discussion on this item by the board? Seeing none. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to L2, Human Resources. L2A, The Quarterly Report on the Williams Uniform Complaints. There weren't any, so that's good. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to Item M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Trustee Water.
I have one. I'd like us to take a moment of silence in honor of two teachers from the district who died recently. One was Joe Richmond, English teacher of Napa High. Went to San Francisco State, and he spent his entire teaching career at Napa High School. And he was, yep, he was a wonderful colleague, a great teacher, really fantastic cook. You know, he never talked much about himself, but, you know, he came out of the, all the turmoil at San Francisco State. He was there then, and he was just a wonderful person. And he was buried on the night. And the second one is Marina Seamanstad. She came out of retirement to help us, she was a special education teacher, very different from Mr. Richmond. She went to Mills College, and a very elegant person, wonderful cook. She lived across the street from me for, I don't know, at least 12 years. And her funeral is going to be on Monday. So moment of silence, please.
Now observe a moment of silence. All right, moment has passed. We'll move on to Item N, Future Agenda Items. Seeing none. We'll move on to Item O, Adjournment, I move to adjourn.
Second.
First by myself, second by Trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Meeting is adjourned at 9:38.